All right, the time is 6:30 PM and I will call to order the Cedarburg School Board Meeting for Wednesday, October 25, 2023. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and the town of Cedarburg as well as the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's move into our agenda here. Recognitions, I've got state proclamations. Laura Strobel.
The state of Wisconsin has declared the following proclamations. The week of October 9th through the 13th is National School Lunch Week. The week of October 16th through the 22nd is Wisconsin Science Week and the entire month of October is Keeping Kids Safe Online Month. That's it.
Great, and the full proclamations are posted?
Yes, they are on the district's website.
All right, very good. Cedarburg High School National Merit Semifinalists, Casey Boe, high school principal, will present that to us.
All right, thank you Dr. Clark and the Board of Education for the opportunity to recognize several of our most accomplished students for their recognition of achievement by the National Merit Scholarship Organization. I'm happy to share that Grace Gaventer, Annika Tipkemper-Wolff, Mary Strobel, and Abigail Chen have been chosen for their recognition from a pool of around 1.3 million high school students who applied for the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. We've got Annika's here. There's Annika, Mary's in the back. This is an incredible accomplishment worthy of celebration. Grace and Annika have been selected as semifinalists and they can apply for finalist status and we're excited to support them with their applications and wish them the best of luck as they strive for further recognition. They will be evaluated based on various factors including their performance on the PSAT test, academic achievements, rigor of coursework at Cedarburg High School, and additional information provided in their applications. The announcement of finalists is expected in February when about half of all National Merit Scholarship finalists receive scholarships. I would close by offering that we often use the term gifted to describe students like Grace, Annika, Mary, and Abigail. They've excelled taking the most challenging courses at Cedarburg High School known for having one of the most rigorous programs in Wisconsin. These students work tirelessly dedicating themselves to expanding their understanding of complex concepts and tackling our most challenging problems. While others may give up, these students persevere and therefore I believe simply calling them gifted does not accurately reflect how this recognition was earned through their efforts. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight to congratulate these impressive, hardworking, and resilient Cedarburg High School students. Thank you and go Bulldogs.
Thank you. Now, congratulations, that's fantastic. Consent agenda, Dr. Clark.
All right, with regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on September 20th, 2023, the budget and finance report which includes a summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. Derosa, Director of Human Resources, is here to provide an overview of the personnel report.
Good evening, everyone. Very short and sweet, as you can see on the report. We have no hires or resignations with our professional staff, so this evening we're seeking approval for one resignation and three hires in our pair of professional staff.
All right, thank you. Is that, that's everything on the consent agenda?
Yes.
All right, I would take a motion, if anyone wants to make a motion, to approve the consent agenda.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Superintendent's report, Dr. Clark.
All right, this evening we have several items that we will hear about in the superintendent's report. To begin, I want to acknowledge how quickly this school year is flying by. It seems like it was just yesterday when we were welcoming back the students and staff to the first day of school and now it is in the end of October. Since our last regular school board meeting, the regular seasons for our high school and middle school fall athletics have come to a close. We have wrapped up all of our fall assessments and are fully engaged in our schoolwork. Before we know it, Thanksgiving will be knocking on our door. In conjunction with the idea of Thanksgiving, I would like to highlight that the third annual Cedarburg School District Veterans Day procession will be held on Friday, November 10th. Local veterans participate in a car procession which starts at Environment Park and then goes through the parking lots of each of our elementary schools, past the high school, and concludes at Webster Middle School. Last year, I had the privilege of watching the procession at two of our elementary schools and then attending the presentation at Webster. It was remarkable to not only see the joy the event brought to our veterans, but also the impact the event had on our students. I look forward to this year's event. Now, Mr. Brian Braxma, Director of Buildings and Grounds, will make a statement regarding the district's school safety drills.
Per Act 143, each school is required to do a safety drill and submit that safety drill to the board for review annually.
And that review is in your packet? You should be good to go there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Ms. Kirsten Collins, Director of Technology and Assessment, will provide a review of our 2022-23 state and district assessment performance.
We are happy to bring your, our, last year took a close with our assessment reporting to the board. Our assessment plan for last year was a series of district assessments and state assessments and our plan looks like what you see here. We did iReady in grades K through 8, three times a year. Our BASS Benchmark Assessment System, a Literacy, or ELA, assessment, grades K through 8 in middle school. That is select students and that's done quarterly. Some students who score proficient or on grade level in later quarters do not keep taking it quarter after quarter. And then in the fall, we do a pre-ACT in grades 9 and 10 last year and a practice ACT in grade 11. State assessments, we have our forward exam, pre-ACT, and our ACT. For a very small portion of our population, we have an alternative assessment that students take. We have about 1% of our students with special needs, significant special needs that have alternate curriculum and then are tested on that with the test called the DLM. It's called the Dynamic Learning Maps. So that was our plan for last year. When you look at these assessments, the data is released at different times. So our district assessments generally, as soon as we can turn those around, get the student ISRs, individual student reports, generated and pushed into the portfolio, a letter goes out to principals or to families from the principals. And so, within a few days to a week, we usually get that data pushed out to parents and the BASS data is the only one that is usually addressed during parent teacher conferences. State assessments, ACT rolls in to parents in their home and students in their, at their home address. They get that student report. We get data somewhere, it also rolls in as they get graded, and somewhere April through June, so we get our final results. And forward exam, we get in late June to July. All of the state assessment data is embargoed, which means it cannot be shared outside of the district other than the individual student report to families. So it's always mum's the word until state says, hey, look how our schools did, and that was October 9th this year. So we are well positioned to be sharing this with you now. So when we start talking about our state assessments, we look at our students who are proficient in advance. Ideally, we would want 100% of our students proficient in advance, ready to move on from grade to grade or exiting our system. And the standards are rigorous. So we are one of the top performing districts in the state and these are really good numbers. So it might not look so great that our 11th grade students, only 61.4% are proficient in math on the ACT, that's the 11th grade test, but that's actually really, really good. We've done better and I'll show you a historical, what that looks like, but we're always looking to improve. And we always have to remember that these are cohorts of students that have different experiences over time.
Could you just real briefly for, for people, explain what proficient means in this context because people, laypeople have different, you know, views on what that actually means, I think.
Sure. There is a determination of what percent or scale score on the exam that determines what proficient, a proficient performance would look like or achievement on the assessment. And so, it varies per grade what a, what a, like a, or a state percentile would be. It's usually around 66% in math, somewhere in 70th percentile for reading, but it varies by grade. So proficient, meaning you've mastered that amount of work towards the standards, what students know and can do with regards to the standards. Again, this is one assessment at one period of time.
I think there's also, there is a connection between scoring proficient advanced and, again, you're projecting, but projecting future success in a collegiate course of a similar nature.
Yes, so when you talk about the ACT specifically, proficient in advance is talking about if their, students are meeting the college and career readiness benchmarks. Are they ready for college or career based on their performance? And we'll have some benchmark readiness in the next slide. Laura, you have a question?
I'll wait.
Okay. So you can see what our ELA proficiency levels look like. Mind you, these are three different tests, so comparing those percentiles as an equal measure is not, you know, truly recommended. It's different test, as measured by three different tests and that's what the state uses to measure those. Our grades 9 and 10 took the pre-ACT secure. Previously, it was the ACT Aspire. ACT came through with a new product and we actually kind of used it previously as our fall test and the state moved to using that as the state assessment in 9 and 10. Generally, it's kind of a formative assessment as students move towards that, taking that ACT in 11th grade, you'll see the progress. And it does some prediction on how a student may score on the ACT and it really gives our educators a lot of data to look at, what do our students need yet? Where is their areas for growth and what are their strengths? And then math is on the other side there. So when you take a look at our historical state assessment data, so these are our percentages in the content areas and the tasks over time. So the first group of bars in the chart is the forward exam, our ELA. And you can see that forward exam is grades 3 through 8. And in that first group, we have the dark blue bar, shows that we have 74.4% of our students proficient in advance on the forward exam in ELA. When you compare that historically, that's obviously our, our top number. Similarly, for the forward math assessment, we had a 78.2, again, our highest performance that we've had. Moving through, you get into that grade 9 and 10, ELA and math. You can see the yellow bar is our post-pandemic assessment and you'll see that's the lowest, that bit of drop, and we've done a great job of recovering from that. In previous years, I reported to you and I'll just reiterate it, our district did not see the drops that the state saw. People were impressed with what our data looked like and what we were able to do given the school environment that we had and the learning environments that we were dealing with. So we didn't see the learning loss that other districts saw. Then you'll get over into the 11th grade ACT. Again, you were seeing some decline. I love to put in that 16, 17 cohort. Some of you guys might have siblings in that grade, but yeah, they were stellar. That was an amazing course. Remember, these are cohorts of kids with different experiences. It's the same test, different students, of course, but you've, you can see how the ACT, go Bulldogs, ELA, look at that jump. That was focused efforts on their part, specifically on some things in the ELA assessment, specifically writing. They had a school-wide focus on writing and that's what that jump did. Pretty amazing. So, and then you'll see our math coming up again with our proficiency levels. Any questions on this slide? We'll look at this data again in a different way, same data, and now we're looking at our assessments percent proficient in advance by year. So in 22, 23, our bars, if you go across compared to 21, 22, starting, let's say from the left there, the darker blue bar, we have had increases. The red bar increased, the yellow bar increased, the green bar increased, and all of them, we've seen an increase. So we work very closely with some consultants on our data, coaching around our data, what does this look like? And we specifically work with CISA 6 and they work with many districts in the state. What we hear often is high-performing districts are hard to move and we defy that. So it's really encouraging when we are able to talk to people outside of our district and hear more about what's happening there because, you know, we have this focus on, on just us and we don't really care what people are doing, but we love hearing those things like, we didn't know you could get better. So it's pretty cool. So you can see historically each year where things kind of stood there. That gigantic 85.5 over there on the ACT, ELA in 16, 17 was pretty amazing. So now if we just jump into the forward exam and ELA, this is by grade and this is our proficiency levels compared to the state. We hang pretty tough in the upper, mid to upper 70s. 8th grade, you'll see a drop. You'll see it in math also. 8th grade standards are rigorous. This is known, they are a jump. So you will see that proficiency level go down. It's preparing those students for high school coursework and the rigor is there. And so you do see this. We do quite well, actually. Next month, you'll hear in the state report card what we look like compared to other districts with that 8th grade. So, Elizabeth.
Kirsten, I saw the slide and I just wanted to jump into WISE dash myself, which is the DPI database where the scores are made available to the public. And I just wanted to make sure that the district is giving themselves enough credit for how incredible the forward exam ELA scores are, not only compared to the state, but also compared to neighboring districts. I went ahead today and just looked at the neighboring districts and I just wanted to share what those proficiency scores were for the neighboring districts, just to highlight what an accomplishment this is. So previously in your slide, overall 3 through 8 for Cedarburg, we had 74.4% proficiency. Grafton, 64.3. Germantown, 50.9. McQuan-Demville, 64.9, and Port Washington-Salkville, 56.7. So obviously there are a lot of things heading in the right direction. I know that our teachers, reading specialists, between the Hegarty phonemic awareness, phonics A to Z supplements that have been done at the elementary level, I just think that you can see the accomplishments and the work that Ellen has done as well with the score. So we're really impressed.
Really, really focused work that's been happening and it's moving the needle. Yeah. Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Here's our math scores. Again, really high proficiency rates, 80% and above. That 8th grade math is rigorous. We are diving into what are we doing to help those students become proficient. Our students perform very well as they leave Webster and so it's not, they're not, you know, anemic at all in terms of their abilities and things, but we're saying, what can we do? So work that we do around the forward exam is we pull item analysis and we take a look by grade, by standards, how our students perform and find the standards in which our students have a lower percent getting those, those questions correct. We examine then our curriculum and say, hmm, are we addressing the standard well enough? Are we teaching it? Is our instruction tight and good? Are we teaching it at the right time? Is this a concept that's taught maybe in 7th grade and we need to refresh? Is this a concept that's taught after the forward, after the forward exam? Well, that's easily fixed. We can do that earlier. So that's the type of work we do as we look at this data.
So I would assume then, if, if we're looking at that type of data, iReady would be looked at as well, kind of feeding into that, saying, okay, well, we've got more personalized data. We can specifically drill down to the individual student to see.
Yes. Yep. So there's a correlation that iReady does, a prediction of how students will do on our Wisconsin State assessments, so our, our 3 through 8. It will, at each diagnostic assessment, predict how your students will score. And so, based on what, how they do on the standards in iReady. And it's, it's pretty well on, we score higher on the forward exam than the prediction, which you would want us, want a tool to do, you don't want them to overpredict. So it's working really well, it's very well correlated. We actually look at that data very closely when we work with our consultants and our building leadership teams to say, how did our students perform? We pull the iReady data, which students are on grade level, below, above, and how did they perform below basic, basic proficient or advanced on the forward exam? And we look at that data, what's different, what's the same, how did students do, what are, you know, areas of concern?
When you see this drop from 7th grade of 81 to 68, has that, is that pretty typical from year to year?
It is.
So, and then when you make the adjustments and everything, do you see that reflected in the next year's 8th grade numbers at all or?
We have, we have seen that. We have seen changes in, and Tony could probably speak to it, especially in 8th grade, the work that they did with the math teams. He brought into his leadership team, the CISA 6 consultant, to just work with their leadership team on this, on this data and say, what can we target? How can we help all of our students grow? Where's our low-hanging fruit? Where is the easy moves? How can we move things forward? Do a lot of, they do a lot of look at the curriculum and, and how can they make sure it's being done, you know, taught to fidelity and what things might be missing?
Couple of things too, as far as the, the exam itself, the standards that it's teaching to, they, we looked at those a long time ago and they, to make sure they tie in with Cedarburg and they actually were good standards, so, so we're not just teaching to a, you know, a test of questionable measure, but I have a question on this. Where, when we, when we change the, the math curriculum, which cohort would be reflected in this data? Where, you know, where does that, because I think we're in the middle school now with them, right?
We, 3 years into Bridges or is this 4? Okay, this is the 4th and what did we say, our 8th, our 9th graders? Have to look at that, 4 years in. So that's 8th grade, so they have had 1 year.
Okay.
Of Bridges.
So.
So we should see that number increased. Bridges is very rich with pre-algebra skills. We have our 8th grade students, basically the standards are algebra. And so as that develops and rolls through over time, we should see this number go up.
Because we've been seeing that as, as the, as the cohorts have more experience with the new program.
Yep.
Good, good.
So here's our ACT and these are the 4 areas, content areas that we generally look at. Here's our proficiency of, or proficiency levels as we say, college and career ready. That's the benchmark. And this is how many, what percent of our students are meeting that benchmark compared to state levels. So that's this year. This is over time, that same data, the blue bar would be what you saw, the darker blue bars are what you saw individually on the last slide. And now you can see what this looks like over time. So it's pretty hard to meet all 4 benchmarks, as you can see. But we're increasing over the last 2 years in most areas, at least the last year.
I mean, maybe I'm missing something. So the slide comparing us to the state, like English is 73.7, but then when you go to the next slide, English is at 82. What's the difference there? I mean, that's kind of the same for all those numbers.
Yes, I may have pulled ELA instead of, that's ELA. This one is actually, hmm, good question, I'll have to look. That's a really good question. I have the spreadsheet on my laptop, I'll look it up for you. Good catch, Laura.
Yeah, the other, the other reading is the same way. There's got to be a different measure.
So these are state proficiency. I am thinking DLM could be in here. So our students who took the DLM at high school could be wrapped in here. I'll have to double check that. I made an assumption when I pulled this that it was ACT.
But when you look so at meeting all 4, I mean, we're really consistently below 50%, but that's saying we're ready for college? I mean, because more, I mean, what percentage of our students go to college? I mean, that just, how would you?
So, meeting the benchmark in all 4 areas is very tough. When we say the benchmark, that benchmark is a student has, and where's my high school principal, help me, meets, has a 75% chance of getting a C or better in a college level entry, entry level English, math, reading, or science course. They have 75% chance to get a C or better. They have a 50% chance to get a B or better. That's what that benchmark says and that's saying college and career ready. That would be the college benchmark.
Wait, can you repeat that? So what is the benchmark?
So the benchmarks are set as a measure that students have a 75% chance or, or better chance of scoring a C or better in a college entry level course in the content area or a, and a 50% chance or better of getting a B in that same entry level college course.
Okay. So obviously you're running up against the fact that, you know, some students are more gifted in English and reading and some are more gifted in science and math and so it's more unusual to have those high levels in 4 areas versus maybe 21 and 22.
Agreed. ACT also gives us a STEM readiness score. They give us a few others that we, we track internally and look at, but a lot of other peo, you know, it's not usually a very public type of readiness benchmark, but we take a look at those. I know Alan tracks those with all the tech ed pieces and all the money we've spent in our renovations on maker spaces and engineering and all of those things. So he tracks those very tightly as one of his indicators.
Just from my own learning, could you tell me how those odds are arrived at, like a 70%?
It's a research study. ACT does all of it and they've set these benchmarks. They've been around, I was teaching in the math department here back in 2009 and it was the same benchmarks.
Yeah, when you look at those, it's based on what has actually happened in the past.
And they follow those students into college and they track them and grab all that information and saying, here's what it is. That's what, that's what the college-ready benchmark is.
It's surprising that somebody who's college-ready has a 25% chance of getting a D or an F.
Correct.
I guess that's college.
That might be a little life thrown in there, right?
Yeah. And so those, those numbers obviously feed into, you know, that, that number you get, you know.
The composite.
You've taken it and then that feeds into which schools, you know, they're looking at your, your abilities for enrollment and whatnot, but. But I mean, I've had some students who read and write beautifully, but when it comes to anything with statistics, you know, so it varies.
Our high school teachers in those content areas know exactly what that score is. In math, it was a twenty-two. Our students needed a twenty-two. Karen can probably tell you the science. That changed though. They upped, they upped it.
Science is twenty-three, reading is twenty-two, math is twenty-two, and English is eighteen.
Per the ACT website. Yep, thank you. So that overall score that Kate just mentioned, the composite, your ACT score, this is historically what our score has been. Our highest score ever was that sixteen, seventeen cohort, number one in the state that year. And we've hung out in that twenty-three, twenty-four area for a while.
Which year was it that the state required all students to take the ACT? That was before all?
Fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, so this is a hundred percent of the students taking, other than those who opt out. So the other thing about the ACT, this is our state ACT score. It's on a specific day in March where we sit our kids down and they take it. Students continue to take the ACT. They've taken it before that some and after. We will get a ACT graduate's score for last year's graduating class. That's a different score than this twenty-three point four. That's computed by taking the average of the last time each student took the ACT. Not their highest, the last time. So a lot of kids who have generally taken again, they get higher scores. So that is, the graduate score is usually a little higher. We've had students opt out of taking the ACT as a state assessment because they got a thirty-six before even the state assessment happened. I don't need to take it again. So those students might not be in our composite. They might be a non tester. So that's it for state assessments at this point. I didn't dive into pre-ACT. We do have that data if you're interested in it. We use it as very formative, kind of leading up to the ACT. And it's the ACT that's graded or measured and reported on the state report card also. So we're getting into the district assessments and this is iReady. So this is the iReady diagnostic and it's reading. So you will see placement levels from fall, winter, and spring. So we've just had our fall this year. We have data that came back. iReady separates and measures students based on the standards, on grade level standards, where students perform. We have four percent of the students last fall who were three or more grades below grade level. Seven percent that were two grades below, thirty-three percent that were one grade below. If you think of a student coming in to first grade in the fall, is it a problem that they're one grade below? No, they just finished kindergarten. They're being measured on the first grade standard. So appropriately, you might think they're not going to score much more than kindergarten level. Our students, we have some, you know, we have high performing students. So thirty-three percent, that's fine. We already have twenty-seven percent who are early on first grade per se, or all grade. And then at that fall test, we had twenty-five, or twenty-nine percent mid or above grade level. You can see how over time those numbers changed as then we moved to spring. And we have that two, three, and twelve. So a total of seventeen percent of our students who are somewhere one grade below proficiency or grade level standards. And then the rest are on grade level or above.
The benchmark, oh, sorry, go ahead.
For the seventeen percent or below, are they, I mean, do we try to enroll them in summer school? Or do we, what happens?
We do, we do. We have students who are usually identified and most likely these students already have interventions in place. And for those students who it makes sense, their interventions continue into the summer via summer school in our step program.
So as far as the benchmarks for grade level, are those things, something that iReady puts together? Or are they?
It's Wisconsin.
The state of Wisconsin, okay.
Yep.
We don't have any way of measuring this to the Cedarburg standards? I can imagine that would take some programming.
Right, right.
Okay. And then would, do the, does this include students who might be, like, how would you do it to student who's maybe a special needs student who might, you would expect to be, you know, let's say at a lower grade level in certain academic categories? Do they show up on here?
They do. They are a part of that continuum there.
Does by age basically, by, like biological age or?
Grade level.
Yeah, grade level.
Yep.
Whatever, yeah, the age, whatever age they'd be in, okay.
Yep. So the next part that we look at with the diagnostic assessment is once we get two assessments, you can see how students are growing or not growing. So we try to look at typical growth. We would expect that students in our district should grow the same or more than what a typical student would grow in a year's time, given they're in class, they're be, you know, participating in instruction. And so typical growth is, growth is the average annual growth for a student at their grade level and what their baseline placement is. So myself and Alan, we have a different baseline and we would not be having the same growth goal because at my baseline, typical students grow this much. Where Alan starts, typical students grow this much. So it individualizes that growth for students. The one that we really like to see and what's really important for those students who are on the chart, we were in that red and yellow area, is stretch growth. And you can see the definition below about stretch growth and how it applies to those students or all. So it's the amount of growth a student needs to be on the path to grade level proficiency. For on or above grade level students, it's ambitious enough but attainable level of annual growth that puts them on grade level students to that higher level and advanced proficiency levels. So for our students who are in especially the red, two years of stretch growth puts them on the path to be proficient. So ideally, you're looking at those students that you were talking about saying, how are we servicing those students? How do we get them to grow more than typical? Because if you don't grow more than typical, they're still going to stay behind and maybe even fall further behind. We need to accelerate that growth. So that's the stretch growth. We aim for those stretch growth goals. So here's the math diagnostic from last year, all three assessments. You can see the shift over time. Similar. Love all the blue on the bottom. And here's our students, our average, our students who have completed typical growth is seventy-four percent and stretch growth is forty-six. So the other assessments that I'm reporting on tonight is our AP assessments. So lots of little graphs here just so you can kind of see how our students are performing. So you have the AP test score. Basically, it's a zero to five. Credit bearing at an institution is usually three or above, depends if you'll get credit. Depends on what schools accept what. Sometimes they come in as elective credits. Sometimes they come in at a, in a content area for that entry level English course or math course or world language course. So the small numbers on the bottom are the number of students taking that specific test. So you can see our scores over time. The English, the ELA APs are generally junior and senior level courses. Math and computer science are usually junior, some sophomores in statistics, but the computer science might even be a freshman in that computer science principles. If you look at that computer science principles, we have one hundred and thirty-nine students taking that, that exam. That's atypical, those computer science numbers, both of those. Lots of kids taking Calc AB and BC too. Here's our AP science courses and lots of social studies courses. That hundred and eighty-two students is psychology. A lot of students take AP psychology. And then we move on to AP art. Look at that one student. And world languages. Really doing well. So as we look at all of this data, what do we do with it? If you just look at it and do nothing with it, it's a waste. So we always talk about that data to action. How do you move from the data into action? We do that with our teams. We have our teams at work. We work at DLC and work on goals. What are our focus? What does that look like? What does the curriculum look like? How do we need to change things? We have our data consultant come in and say, what are you working on? Here's what your data looks like. At the building level, our leadership teams do the same. Our grade level teams and our classroom content level teams, they all work with this data at the teacher level. They know their data. That's the really important thing. So we focus on actionable data. Where is it that we can make those differences? What is actionable here? Can we move the needle on that? Does it make sense to focus there? So the next steps that we have here in our assessment, kind of calendar of activities, we approved our assessment plan in August. We'll move that to April, May this year, get that done. And then you'll see, again, the wrap up of district and state data in this October meeting and then state report cards in November. But we've talked about bringing our interim assessments, the iReady data, different overviews into our curriculum committee of the board. So then all of you would receive that too. Any questions at this time?
I just want to thank you. This information is very appreciated.
You're welcome.
Kristen, could you go back, I think it was three or four slides where it was the computer class that had the high, high attendance, right?
Hundred and thirty-nine students taking the exam.
Is it trending that direction? Meaning how many students were in that class over like past two, three years?
It's grown over time. We used to have one teacher and now we have multiple, two for sure. It's a entry level computer science class. It's computer science for all. It's not, it's an overview class and it's not all programming. When you get into computer science A, that is Java. That's the Java language.
I was just wondering if it was something that maybe was looking to be less atypical if the numbers were going up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a fantastic presentation. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Kristen, did you, I think you said this, did you say that the winter, like iReady assessments would be presented at a full board reading or the curriculum committee level?
We had said curriculum committee of the board. Yep, we'll have growth measures too then. You'll be able to see that growth. Right now, we could tell you where students start without first fall bar, but that'd be it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Now, I'll see Mr. Alan Growth, Director of Curriculum Instruction, will facilitate updates regarding the Cedarburg High School German American Partnership Program and the Global Scholars Program.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Clark. I watched that it's time to get up and get moving. So how about doing some traveling together? So tonight, we thought it'd be great to have an update for you. The board, as you know, approves foreign travel. And so we have two travel experiences that have concluded from this past summer. One to Germany and then one to Italy and Greece. And so to kick it off, Derek Schaefer is going to come up and he has a student with him. Derek Schaefer, a German teacher here at the high school. And we'll have a slide, some slides to share with you about their summer travel. So Derek, come on up.
This podium slants a little bit, but I had a good luck charm that I received from my counterpart in Germany. It's a little coffee mug which has things that you're supposed to say to students in German and how you say those things like, you know, don't tip your chair and please put your phone away and all those very useful phrases. So, but I'm going to put it over here so that it doesn't fall in the way because I wouldn't want to do that. So first of all, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and to present to you for the first time, as this is my second year now here at Cedarburg High School as the German teacher. So I'm very happy to be here and as the German teacher and as mentioned, as the gap coordinator. So I will be talking about the, the German American Partnership Program exchange to Germany, which took place on June eighteenth to July eighth of this last summer. And, but I guess before I start, I'll leave it at that nice white screen. Before I start, this is really an honor and a privilege to be able to do this. It's an incredible opportunity for the students. I always like to say that, you know, learning a language is sort of a window to the world. But this goes beyond the window. They step out of the window, out of the door and actually into the world to be able to do something like this. So to have this opportunity to lead a group of great students and do this is really great. And for me, it's a great perk of the job that I get to go to Germany every other year. So I won't argue. But then, yeah, so I guess I'll just talk a little bit about where we went, what we did, kind of, you know, maybe just briefly reasons for why we decided to do a couple of things we did. And then I'll have Annika here talk a little bit about her experience there, get a testimony from a student. And then I also have Annika's mother here who may say a few words to also talk about what it's like to have a parent, you know, of a, of a student who goes abroad. So again, as we mentioned, German American Partnership Program, a partnership that's been around here at Cedarburg, I believe, since 2017. But the German American Partnership Program was established back in nineteen seventy-two. So at Cedarburg here, the German students come visit us in the even years. And then we make the return trip in, on the odd years. So they come in the spring of the even years and then we make the return trip in the summer of the odd years. And there's our home away from home, beautiful, beautiful area in Bavaria just southwest of Munich. The, the school is on a lake. And so it's, you know, we're right at the foothills of the Alps. So it's really a beautiful, beautiful area. Place that I had not spent much time in many of my times in Germany, but really a wonderful place to study and be. So just a little bit about what we did while we were there. So we started off the trip actually in Berlin. I have a lot of experience in Berlin. I did some of my doctoral work in Berlin. And so I felt that it'd be a good place to kind of get started. And I put here a sort of a Germany light because Germany is a very, it's a large cosmopolitan town. A lot of people speak English. So it kind of gets the students a little warmed up to being abroad. You kind of get over the jet lag. And then, you know, you kind of warm up to being in a different country before we go to our host families and they're required to think and speak a little bit more in the language. So while we're there, I, while I do encourage them to speak as much German as possible, they get to do the sort of lighter German, like ordering something at a restaurant or, you know, buying something at a store or going shopping or, you know, the more easier things before they get to really the German around them every day for twenty-four hours. So we ride in Berlin, right away ate at an authentic German restaurant. We walked around the historic Alexanderplatz, which is right in the center of the city and the Odein Linden Boulevard. Guided expertly by yours truly, Herr Schaefer. Again, I spent a lot of time there, so I know much about it. So then day two, we visited the German Parliament Building, got a nice little tour of that and got to see sort of a three sixty panoramic view of Berlin, more historical things. Walked the historic Brandenburg Gate, which is very famous, has been in a lot of images, especially of the fall, the Berlin Wall. And then visited the memorials of the murderous Jews of Europe. And then visited the TV tower, a nice other. And then visited the TV Tower, a nice, the tallest building in Berlin, a nice panoramic view of Berlin as well. Day three, more hop-on, hop-off bus tour things. Walked along the East Side Gallery, which is now, which is the largest remaining section of the Berlin Wall. And it's now been turned into an art gallery where it's all just paintings and great arts talking about, you know, sort of the fall of the wall. Stopped at the Kaiser Wilhelm Memorial Church. A bombed-out church that's been kind of made to stay that way, a sort of reminder of the war and sort of the horrors of the war. And then we also did an expert-led Cold War bunker tour, which was also very interesting. So as you see here from our time in Berlin, it was a lot of sort of tourist things, you know, but again, just trying to get a little history, get a look, get our feet underneath us before we moved on to the actual part of the exchange. So just a few pictures, I can, I want you to browse those. Lots of good photos, many expertly taken by my co-chaperon, Karen Tiffany. So then on day four, then we were off to Dissen, Ammersee, which is our partner city. So we left the big city and as you see there, and then went to the quaint town of quaint Bavarian home of Dissen Ammersee. Traveled there by train, which was an experience, but it was, it was a lot of fun. Then I won't go through every single thing, every single day we did there. But basically, the first day of school and school in general in Dissen, students visit classes with their exchange partners. And then they have it, have the opportunity to attend other classes as well. Then the second and third days was on weekends. We arrived on a Thursday. Our first day was on Friday of school. They spent with their host families. And every weekend that we're there, the, the two weekends that we're there, they spend that time with their host families. Some host families will take them also on excursions or trips. They'll go to maybe to Austria or Switzerland, which is about as far away as going to Illinois or Iowa. So really a great experience that they get to see that stuff, too. And exactly that we're by the Alps, it's really amazing, beautiful, picturesque type of thing. And then on the weekdays, as per the German-American Partnership Program rules, students must spend a minimum of five days in school with their host part, host partners, which they did. I think actually we spent six. And then on the days that they're not in school, we have educational excursions that are planned by our partners. And then I'll just talk about a little bit what those were. And then Annika can give her sort of, give her experiences. So one is the Lindenhof Palace. So we went to two palaces built by the fairy-tale king Ludwig II. Just beautiful, again, as you can see, right by the Alps. And the other one being the very famous Neuschwanstein Castle, the most famous castle. When everybody thinks of castles in Germany, the one that Disney's modeled after. And so you see very picturesque images there as well. So that was a really wonderful experience for the students. Then we also take a trip to Munich on one of those days. So we do a number of things there, just kind of walk around. The, our, my counterpart, Andrea Spindler in Germany, spent much time in Munich. So she gave us a little bit of a tour of some of the things. Went to the BMW Museum as well. And BMW is from Munich as well, from Bavaria. And so got a great tour of that. And then some of the best moments were just these beautiful hikes that we got to do and hiking the Bavarian Alps and going to the Partnachklamm Gorge, which, as you can see, is just absolutely beautiful. Personally, I spent most of my time in northern Germany in Berlin, which is a great area, but very flat and kind of like being in Iowa, too. I hope nobody's from Iowa. But, you know, this is just, I mean, even better than I could have imagined. The students felt the same way. So you can see these beautiful images of the gorge that we got to see. Of course, there's the churches. And then just a little bit about our partners in Dissen. So as you can see, like as I mentioned, it's right on the southwest edge of that lake. Smaller town, even a little bit smaller than Cedarburg. It's a climactic, climactic spa region. I think one of the things the students said so much about the, what being there is like this fresh air. It was this beautiful, fresh air while we were there. Again, just a couple of facts about that area, some pictures, as you can see. The town is like the downtown area of Dissen, of course, very, when you picture Germany, when you think of Germany, this is kind of what you, what you think of. And then our partner, so the Ammersee Gymnasium, right, is built 2006, approximately eight hundred and thirty pupils, grades five to twelve. So it's a gymnasium, which is a college preparatory school. So the students who graduate from these, this school are then college-bound, university-bound or professional school-bound, but most go to university. And then as you can see, the two tracks there, the natural science, technology track, and then also a social science and language track. And they also have exchanges with France and Poland as well, as well as us. So it's really, you know, the teachers there were really great. And I met, met Mr. Lippel, their principal. He's very dedicated to the exchange, wants to keep it going. He finds that, that the students, it's a very valuable experience for them to be able to come here to our school and have us there as well. And then finally, just some pictures of our D home in Bayern, our Bavarian home, those that's our arrival. And then there's the whole, the whole group there with the, with the not-real cow that we got to learn how to milk. And then the, the one thing I do have to say is that picture, Annika's in that picture with the fried eggs. They had all these really great games planned for us. This was on our welcome evening. And they had all these really great games planned for us, one of which is they gave the students three eggs and a pan. And they said, go out in town and find somebody who will let you fry those eggs in their home. And amazingly, people were like, come on in. And they fried the eggs in the home for them. And the first students to do that and were able to bring the eggs back, won. Like, wasn't that what you got that won? Yeah, yeah, so they, and they won because they came back fastest with fried eggs. So I mean, it also, it's a, it's a really great environment, too, because the, the fact that, you know, these community members living near the gymnasium, living near the school, are willing to welcome, exchange students into their home to just, you know, do a fun little game with them is really, is really great. So. Some more images, some of the great food we got to, we got to eat while we were there. Oh, and that, the picture with the cross there, if you, if you see that, that's actually with the American flag and the Wisconsin flag. So one of the things is that we're gone over the Fourth of July, which is a big deal. And so our German partners know that. They know that it's a big deal, that we're not home on our national holiday. So they did a number of different things for us, like on this day, we were touring a church. And suddenly, the German students were gone. And we were continuing to tour the church. And I didn't even suspect anything. I didn't even know something was up. And as we walk out of the church, there they were, it's with that sign that says Happy Independence Day with American flag. And I think they were singing John Denver. So it was, it was really, it was really nice and it was a really, it was a really big deal. And it's, it's kind of, it really is kind of an emotional day for the students. You know, they're excited, they're happy to be in Germany, they're having a really great time. But if there's a time, I think, when the homesickness kind of sets in a little bit, it's, it's on that day, you know? So it was just really great. And then also on that evening, I believe, a, a lot of students or a lot of families had gotten, had got sparklers for the students and, you know, were doing those kinds of things, had like little cookouts. And so it's really, it was really great for them to, you know, have that for our students on a day in which, you know, you know, as we're doing tours and stuff, try to take our mind off of not being at home on, on this day. But it was very, it was very kind of them. Then find us more pictures. As you see, a lot of us, including myself, bought a, some of the local Bavarian garb and bought lederhosen and dördels. Having spent, on a personal note, having spent my time in northern Germany, I swore I would never buy lederhosen for, for something, because it's a very southern German thing, but when in Rome, I guess, or when in Bavaria. And then that, that picture of everybody hugging, it's really, the students become very close. It was, it's a very emotional day on the day that we leave. There are a lot of tears, both when the students leave the United States, but especially when they leave Germany, because that suits you the second round of the trip. The first round of the trip is like, okay, we know there's going to be a, a Vize and we're going to see each other again. But on that second one, you know, it really becomes like, okay, we're leaving and we hope that we get to see you again. And for most of the students, that's the way it is. It's, you know, when do we get to see each other again? How are we going to work that out? And I know students have plans, a number of students have plans to see their partners again in the very near future. And as you can see there, the partnership between the teachers as well becomes very close. And so it's, it's an incredible experience for everybody involved. And I mean, I would, I, I can't imagine not, not doing this. So and then, so just as a, as a look to the future, then I'll give Annika just a, a couple of seconds to talk. So coming up for the next one, the Germans will be visiting here in 2024 this spring. They arrive on March thirty-first. They'll be in Chicago for the first few days. So they do their sort of America light in Chicago before they come to Cedarburg on April second. And then we, of course, then do our return visit in June, July of 2025. And then, you know, things the Germans do while we're here, we do lots of different things. Go to Milwaukee, Howard Davidson, tour Cedarburg. In the past, they have gone to a Bucks game at domes. This is, this is my, this will be my first time having the Germans here. It's not my first time running an exchange, but here at Cedarburg, this will be my first time having the students here. So I'm very much looking forward to taking them to these places and, you know, giving them a little taste of what life is like here in, in Cedarburg and, and in the United States. So and then I'll just give, turn the mic over to Annika just to give you a student perspective and, and then, yeah.
Guten Abend. As Herr Schaefer said, I'm Annika Sipkemper-Wolff and I participated in the exchange over the summer. I just found it to be an incredible opportunity for learning and connection. And of course, it was also a ton of fun. So we spent our first couple of days in Berlin and I found it extremely interesting because of its connection to our, like, course content that we had been learning about in German for previously. And we learned about all of these things like the Berlin Wall and the Cold War during our coursework in that school year. And then we got to actually go and see those places. We got to have tours of those places. It was very fascinating. Berlin is a very interesting city historically and it was a great opportunity for that. And then once we got to Dissen Ammersee, it was, it was very lovely. My host family and I had a great connection. They were very kind. They took me like an hour and a half away to go visit a fossil site that I wanted to see in Germany, which was really cool and I really appreciated that. And also, we attended school with them, obviously. And all of the students did little presentations about America while we were in school. And me and my partner on the presentation, Isabel, we actually presented about Cedarburg in German. And it was kind of terrifying, but it ended up being a lot of fun. And we even got to present to a class of Ukrainian refugees who were attending the school at the time, which was a great experience. And we got to just sit and talk with the students afterwards. I found that the classes that they were taking in Germany had close connections with my classes here. So I was able to do their math problems. I was even able to read one of the poems they were reading because we had previously done it in class. Der Erokrane. And yeah, it was a great learning opportunity. And then I have incredibly fond memories of swimming in the lake with my host sister and all of her friends and playing Mario Kart on the train, all sorts of things. Of course, my excursion to that fossil site was a highlight. And we went on so many just beautiful hikes through one of the most incredible places in the world. And we got to learn about the fairy-tale king and the Cold War bunkers. So it was, it was just a wonderful experience overall and I'm very glad to have been able to do it. Thank you.
Can you share how your fluency and comfort in speaking German improved on that trip?
Oh, absolutely. So before the trip, I believe I had a B-one language level. I'm not sure what my language level is now, but I gained a significant amount of comfort speaking German over the trip. So beforehand, I was a little timid. I, when I went to the, when I would go to like German restaurants in the US, I'd be afraid to order in German. But now I have pretty much no fear speaking German. And I also learned like a lot of slang and modern terminology because some of our textbooks are from like nineteen eighty-nine. So I learned some modern German speaking and a lot, I gained a lot of confidence. So it was very helpful in that sense. Thank you.
Do you know what their school calendar is over there that you were in school and what, in America, summer here?
Yeah. Yeah, so their, their school calendars, they go for, it's approximately, it varies from state to state, but in Bavaria, they go for about two hundred days to school. And so they have, and they have shorter breaks, but more frequent breaks over the year. So they have a long summer break, which usually starts at the end of July. And that's about six weeks, usually goes about mid-September. And then they have, you know, up until about, I think, sometime in late October, early November, then they have another two-week break. And they have two weeks for Christmas. And then they got two weeks again for spring break. And then they got, so they have, you know, more frequent two-week breaks. They're, they're in more days of the year than typically in the United States. And their breaks, they don't have that big, long summer break. They do have a longer one, it's about six weeks. But and then, yeah, it's about two weeks spread out throughout the year.
I'm Jessica Sipkemper, Annika's mom. And gosh, I, I'm trying to piggyback off the two of you because they've already said many things that I would have said. But the parent perspective for me is that, you know, you're taking a piece of your heart and sending it across the ocean. So that's terrifying. And I knew Frau Timmerman had done great legwork over, what, a decade of setting a foundation. I didn't know this guy. But as I told him last night at conferences, I couldn't think of a better person to have stepped in and, and continued to build that foundation and expand with his experience in Berlin. So that was really comforting to know these people and trust these people who are taking a piece of me to another continent. Annika, you may know, took another trip the year before. If I could have switched them and had Gap first, because it's so supported. You literally, you drop your child off at the school, they get on the bus, they go to Chicago, fly to Germany, do their thing in Germany, fly back to Chicago, get on the bus, come back to you. I knew who she was with, the kids, the adults. It was just so comforting to me. And I remember before you went to your first Germany trip with, which was a scholarship with a group of people we'd never met before. And I had to just send her to New York and hope that she'd get back to New York in one piece and figure that out on my own. That was a lot of stress. I probably got a little extra silver from that. It was so nice to not have to worry about that. And I remember right before you left, you seemed a bit anxious. And I was like, are you having, are you getting cold feet? And she was like, well, no, I just don't know if, if I'm going to be successful with this. And I was like, I, I know you're going to be fine. Frau Timmerman has put you through, you know, the wringer here, you're going to be fine. But to go have that experiential opportunity to prove it, not just to Frau Timmerman or classmates, but to herself, I can travel to another country and do this. That was just a huge point of personal growth, I think, for Annika. And then for me as a parent to be like, wow, that's huge. So the Gap trip to me was such a perfect scaffolded opportunity that gave me such peace of mind to be able to send my child and, and to breathe a little bit more calmly. So highly endorse it. It's also super accessible and equitable because the cost, you guys keep the costs so low that really any kid can do it. And some of these international trips really aren't very accessible. But as a single mom who's an educator, that was a, that was a game-breaker for me. Deal-breaker, game-changer, all those things. So I support the Gap program. Thank you.
I had a quick question. How many students participated this time around?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah, so there were sixteen students going both there and back, yeah.
And which grade levels?
So the, on the, when the, they're freshmen and sophomores, when the students come here. And then they're sophomores and juniors when they make the return trip. Just finishing their sophomore and their junior year when they make the return trip.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, we're running a little long, so I'm going to have to jump ahead real quick in the agenda because we have. because we have item five. We'll come back to you, Alan. It says that we're going to take public comment no later than 7:45 PM. It's 7:40, so I'm going to call if anyone here is interested in making public comment. All right, I see nobody. Proceed. Thank you.
Dave, can I just make a quick request? Is it possible that if the board is okay with it and all attending, for our lights to be turned down just a bit? My glasses are not doing the job I need them to do.
That's fine with me.
Just if it can be dimmed a bit, I'd like to be able to sit for the whole meeting.
Any objection?
Thank you.
No objection.
Well, wasn't that exciting to hear?
Who can handle that? Who knows how to turn down the lights?
I think Brennan went down.
Thank you.
So it took me back a couple of years ago when this was first, the Gap program was presented to the curriculum committee of the board and then the full board. One of the key components to the program that was really emphasized was relationships. I think you heard that come through loud and clear. Just the the close, deep relationships that the students develop with other students and even adults with other adults. So very exciting, and thank you, Board, for approving that. The second program we want to share out on is our Global Scholars Program. So I'm going to invite Jeff Elmaker to the microphone. And it looks like he has some students with him as well. And again, how nice to hear the connection between the two travel experiences and how this program. Jeff, thank you for your leadership in helping to keep this program going and all the coordination of all the different experiences for students. So Jeff, I'm going to give you the, welcome you, and you can just take it from here. There you go.
Okay. Thank you for having us tonight. Thanks for all your support, the board and District Office, on all these amazing trips so far. Before I start, I'd also like to thank our high school administrative staff. Our school nurse, Nicole Cottin, was amazing, helping us prepare and make sure that all of our students are safe on these trips. So this is our trip that we took this summer to Italy and Greece in 2023. I think if I go forward here, this is, our first trip was in 2017 to Iceland. But these are the most recent trips that we've been given the opportunity to experience. 2018 to Japan, 2019 to Thailand, of course, the trip in 2023 that we'll be talking about. This summer is our trip to the Galapagos Islands. We have about 10 students signed up for that right now. And then later this evening, if approved by the board, we are anticipating a 2025 trip to Australia and New Zealand. So I think with these trips, it's amazing. I think everything that was kind of already said earlier, it's just this is a great opportunity for our students. Again, I can't thank this board and the school district enough to give our students this opportunity. I kind of want to thank also my other chaperones on the trip, Dan Irwin, Stacy Lesmeister, and Julie Griesar. Without them, our 26 students wouldn't have the experience that they had. I'm going to pass it on to two of those students that have generously volunteered their time this evening to share their experience about our trip to Italy and Greece.
All right, so we kind of split up our presentation to Italy and Greece. So we'll start off by talking about Italy. So these are all photos that I definitely, well, I did take. And I have been to Italy and Greece before, but I was very little. So going back was just amazing because I am going to be an anthropology English major with a minor in archaeology. So really, going there when I am this age and this maturity level, I really got to see what I will be doing in my future. And standing in places like the Colosseum in front of the fountain, it's like, wow. History is just amazing. I was so excited. It makes me so excited to even just talk about. And having our tour guides on the trip, they were just so knowledgeable about all of these places that was extremely informational. And I felt like I could get a lot of new ideas. And it really cultivated like the educational part because we were doing a lot of learning this trip, right? In Pompeii, the bottom photo there that just opened up recently, right? And it was so cool to see how well that was preserved. And Italy was just a great experience. Definitely.
I cannot even begin to explain how much Italy meant to me because I had the opportunity to take AP Art History my sophomore year. And we, I ticked off so many pieces that I wanted to see on that trip. I mean, it was so incredible. And even in the top picture, that was my AP Art History teacher, Ms. Griesar. So I could not believe how lucky I was to be able to study this art so intensely. And then the next year, go see it with my educator. I mean, it was something that I will always appreciate. I will never take that for granted, being able to stand in the Sistine Chapel, going over the pieces we had studied, and I had taken hours of notes on it, had just appreciated, but could really see on another level now. I mean, being there with Ms. Griesar, she had her binoculars, and we were just in another world. We were going through the Vatican Museum to get to the Sistine Chapel. And around every corner, she was pointing like, quick look, like Caravaggio, where? Like, want to see them? And even now, as I continue art history, because that level of knowledge and foundation and just appreciation for the artwork that I was able to see, like the Bernini sculpture there, it was unbelievable. And it's inspired me to continue art history, seeing it in person, loving it, and just really witnessing its beauty. It does wonders than looking that on my notebook and on a page. So that was something unbelievable that I'll always, I'll always just be thankful for.
Of course, and we went to Greece, which was amazing that we were going to be able to go to two different places, Italy and Greece. And so here, it was beautiful. Our tour director was actually from Greece, and he was able to teach us some of the language, which was really cool. We got to go to all the different islands. We went to Santorini and Mykonos, which I've never been to, which was amazing. It doesn't even feel real. It feels like a movie set. And so an amazing moment that I definitely had was in front of the Athena's Daughter, is what they're called. Our tour director, he was able to get us in early to this museum, so there was like nobody there. So I just got to stand in front of them for like 15 minutes, and I was just in my own world. And then I left, and then I came back, and it was crowded. So I just felt so blessed to have that opportunity to just really connect with our history. And you really can only get that if you go to certain places. And having like the opportunity to just go there with the school at this age is just absolutely incredible.
Similar to Tessa, I just am thankful to, again, I really love government and the fact that we were there with Mr. Irwin, who was my AP Government teacher. I mean, to stand there with the foundations of democracy and be in the museums with the Parthenon and have all this stuff right in front of you, and this is where it originated. It puts it in perspective, similar to standing in DC, it feels like. You're there, the history is real, and it just encapsulates you in another way versus reading it in the textbook. And we were also able to have these really unique cultural experiences that our tour guide was able to just get us to. I mean, we took a Greek dance lesson, and that was something that, it was just so eye-opening. I mean, you can read about this stuff and read about the other cultures, but really, having a Greek instructor, you know, clapping at you and having you dance, it's just such a different way to look at things. And I just want to add in there, because we're kind of going to the end, the teachers. I was lucky enough to have all of them before going on the trip, and I had no anxiety. I was so comforted by their presence, and I had full confidence, full faith. I get very motion sick. And on the cruise, I had a little bit of trouble, and I could not have asked for a better support system. Immediately, they were rushing to my side, they were with me, they comforted me on the deck while everyone else was downstairs. I mean, they were just telling me stories to make me laugh, keep my mind off of the troubles I was having. I mean, I couldn't have asked for a better group of teachers to support me. And just their passion for knowledge and their pursuit to watch us understand this on a deeper level really came through. I mean, I think I talked to Mr. Elmaker on the bus constantly, his ear off about each place we had just visited and how amazed and enticed by it. And we were just looking up more and more in history about what we were going to see tomorrow. I mean, everyone was so enthralled that I don't think I ever stopped talking about it on the trip. And I think my parents, I probably talked their ear off a week at least later. So I was just so thankful. It was remarkable. I really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
So that concludes our two presentations. Exciting, inspirational, right? Yeah, really preparing our students for their futures. So thank you again, School Board, for approving both of those trips. I'm going to remain here because I think I have some items that are, or whatever.
Just a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, because we've already done the public comment section, so Dr. Clark, recommendation?
All right. This evening, we have nine recommendations. The first four recommendations all come as recommendations for approval from the Curriculum Committee. The first recommendation is seeking approval from the board regarding the Global Scholars Trip to Australia and New Zealand during the summer of 2025, and Mr. Growth will take it from there.
Yes, and so you saw that in the presentation. So that is, it allows the school to start publicizing to students the trip and barring no other concerns regarding the trip at that time. Then it allows students to begin saving for that. And Mr. Elmaker and other teachers to do some preparations for that in light of itinerary, talking with students' families, and getting them prepared for that and getting that in their calendars. So that's what you'd be taking action on.
I'll move for approval.
I would second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just had a question. I think this was the item where I asked if there was any looking into fundraising in the past. Does this make, does this make sense? Was there any follow-up on that before this evening or not quite yet?
I did do some searching on policy on that. I'm not aware of any policy that would prohibit them from doing that. I'm just not sure that we've done that in the past for these particular trips. But I think that Mr. Elmaker did speak to the committee that it would be helpful. So yeah, nothing that the board would take action on.
Okay, so nothing right now that we can see would prohibit it, but not necessarily is set plan. So first step certainly. Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything further? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right. The second recommendation is seeking approval from the board regarding the adoption of a new geography textbook, Discovering World Geography, to be used in the sixth-grade social studies course.
So the Curriculum Committee of the Board again heard the discussion about this book. It was trialed, first explored in the spring. We wanted more time to start out the school year and do a more intentional work with the text as it works with the world history text. And so the Webster Middle School sixth-grade teachers and the administration feel this is a good complement to the world history content. Scope and sequence was shared with the Curriculum Committee of the Board, so we are requesting approval of this text.
Was there any follow-up with the fact that the American portion, the chapters, were not going to be taught since it was, you're teaching world history in sixth grade? And whether that'll be picked up in seventh and eighth grade?
There was actually. So I, we vetted kindergarten through fifth grade, the new Impact Social Studies. And then we also reached out to grade seven and eight and just asked for a dive on North America and the United States. And so you can see, especially in Impact Social Studies, how we set the stage where students are introduced to their their home, their community, their local community, Cedarburg, Wisconsin. And then it goes deep into North America. By the time they leave fifth grade with Impact Social Studies alone, students will have a solid understanding of North America before they even step into Webster. So then it could picks up again a bit in grade six, but not as rich as the K5 experience, and then continues in grade seven and eight. So we do have a scope and sequence that laid it all out and what students would receive along the way. And you can see how doing a more in-depth unit in grade six would be probably an overreach after all the K5 content that they receive. They're going to walk in the doors at Webster with really a solid understanding of our country. So that was something we, I don't, we didn't really discuss, like, it was more thinking about the seven, eight experience, but the elementary experience alone now sets the stage for really in-depth understanding of our country.
Well, I think it's beneficial too, coming as a historian, when you look at the amount of content and how in-depth you're getting at the middle school level and really the youngness of the United States. It makes much more sense to look at the world in sixth grade, you know, much older, established, and then following up in seventh and eighth grade with much younger content.
Yeah, we we agree. There was and continues to be open-mindedness to swapping a unit out if need be. But again, Impact Social Studies, when you, if you were to look at the scope and sequence for the content K5 and you see how they systematically just keep growing the boundaries for students, by the time they're done with fifth grade, they really, they really know where we are. They know where Cedarburg is, and they know where we are in the in the country and in the world. So it it really sets the stage for some really good learning in grade six in other areas of the world.
Alan, I just wanted to point out the one thing that we discussed at the Curriculum Committee regarding this textbook was that any online portions related to current event stories would be treated the same way that we discussed with the full six through eight world and American history textbooks with the teachers, vetting them and then presenting them to students as appropriate.
Absolutely. And teachers at Webster were given professional development around the social studies guidelines that the Curriculum Committee of the Board saw. So they understand its application to their content as well and will apply them. So this evening, then, I would be asking for board action on the approval of this text, and we would implement this text immediately.
I would make a motion to approve the new geography textbook.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
All right. The third recommendation is seeking approval from the board regarding the creation of a new high school course called an AP Precalculus for students in grades 10 through 12.
Appreciate the diligence of the high school math department to explore this course in advance of the presentation to the Curriculum Committee of the Board. So last year was an investigation, not only of regional school districts around us and the implementation of this new course, but its relevance to Cedarburg High School, and felt confident that it would be a good match for our students. And we're recommending tonight that this course be implemented next year, '24, '25.
And it went through the Curriculum Committee?
It did.
It did, yep.
Yep.
I'll move approval.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. The fourth recommendation is seeking approval from the board regarding the use of the English English Language Arts component of the iReady personalized instruction.
So another item that was discussed at the Curriculum Committee of the Board, and we shared with committee members some of the background information, of which vetting the the resources that will be shared with students kindergarten through eighth grade, the process and procedures that we went through. And we're confident that it meets Cedarburg's standards. And our recommendation is that the board approve the iReady ELA personalized learning content to start tomorrow.
And this is the one that requires the parental consent because of the data issues?
Correct.
Okay.
Which was already sought, so we know, those families already know, and we already have a plan in place for those students who would not have it.
Great. Thank you.
I appreciated this topic coming back to the Curriculum Committee. We had most of the board present at the the meeting, and we really had a really robust discussion between the board and several of the teachers and educators who trialed it. And I thought it was just a really good discussion. And we really dove into how you and your team vetted the numerous excerpts and books that were present within the ELA personalized learning. And I will just request, and this was said at the meeting, that this is a topic that I'm interested in hearing updates on throughout the year regarding the personalized learning. I know that Kirsten has planned the iReady winter update for the Curriculum Committee. Just being something new, looking forward to being updated on it.
Of course.
Did you determine a process for reviewing the the content material? I know we re-reviewed what's there currently, but as far as keeping on top of it?
Yes, we will be notified if and when any new content is introduced, and we would instantly vet that again.
Good to do. Thank you.
It sounded like it was something that happened, what, like two, one to two times a year, maybe, and not just like constant updates? You know, every time you logged in, it was like a planned update to the content.
That was my understanding as well.
Yeah, it kind of makes sense, yeah. Okay.
And I guess I'm just confirming this is to be used during enrichment time for about 45 minutes per subject per week?
You are correct.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, the schools have, they call flex time. So, it's thirty minutes attached to the ELA or math block every single day of the week, so that minutes will come out of that period of time.
Okay, thank you.
I would make a motion to approve iReady ELA.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Nope. Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you, Ellen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ben Irwin, Director of Business Services, will entertain questions and provide a little presentation regarding the next three recommendations. This past Monday, October 23rd, 2023, Mr. Irwin presented on the following recommendation topics during the annual Cedarburg School Board Budget Hearing. This year, we held the hearing on Monday to provide Board members and members of the community time to digest the information, Mr., provided by Mr. Irwin. For the first component, we will seeking approval from the Board regarding the 2023-24 original budget.
And we've already seen that on Mondays. I'll move approval.
I will second that.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make sure that, obviously, in the budget, we have 4% approved, but if necessary, change could be made to that.
Yep, so the process that we typically use when we, the Board approves the budget for the year, obviously, that takes care of, like, majority of the budget, but if there's larger ticket items that change over the course of the year, we bring those back to the Board. And the last kind of adjustment we do is, in June, we do a final revision for any adjustments that would occur during the course of the year, but typically, like I said, larger ticket items, we have a board discussion regarding those and make sure everyone's on the same page.
Ben, have there been years in the past where the budget has been approved either, or, Dave, you've been here a while as well, have there been years in the past where the budget, as presented in the fall, is approved without that percentage having been finalized prior to then?
Not since I've been here.
Okay.
It's probably ten years, a plus.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right.
Oh, my vote's not a reflection of your work on this. It's just based on what you shared just then. Go ahead.
Okay, so, anything else? Anyone? All right, Ellen, favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion and abstention. Okay, so you've got five to one to one. Got that, Brenda? Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
All right, next, we are seeking approval from the Board regarding the 2023-24 tax levy certification.
We reviewed that, too, and on Monday, I'll move approval.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thank you for your work in communicating it very clearly.
Absolutely.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, finally, Mr. Irwin will be providing the latest update regarding options for the District 2024 Health Insurance Renewal, and then we are seeking Board approval for one of the options.
Yep, so it's a new topic, or not a new topic, but a new update from Monday. So, as the Board knows, we've been working through our health insurance renewal for 2024 for the last couple of weeks. For a starting point, we had a high proposal from United Healthcare, a current provider, as a result of usage on the plan. This is the background. Typically, we want to balance premiums against actual costs on the plan, and as we looked at the renewal for this year, those costs were exceeding premiums by 183%. And so, from United Healthcare's point of view, they need to recoup those costs by increasing our premiums on the plan, and so their initial proposal was a 44% increase. We have a rate cap guarantee built in there that brought down to 24.9%, and so it's kind of the first start, or first place we started in terms of our negotiations with United Healthcare. Going through the different steps to bring that renewal down, including looking at a couple of different options to basically revise our plan, but also minimize the impact on staff. Some of those options, we're looking at self-funding, putting the coverage out to market with a different provider, or making plan design changes. As we went through that process, we eliminated going with a different provider. We just didn't get a lot of quality bids, and even, so there's not a lot of providers out there anymore, as some have left the market in recent years. The second option, looking at self-funded, wasn't viable for this year. We didn't get the quotes we needed for stop-loss coverage for '24, and that's a critical piece when we look at self-funded, because without that, we put ourselves at risk for those high-cost claims that could really throw our budget out of whack. So, what we landed on is making, staying with United Healthcare and making plan revisions to make sure we're staying within a number that's manageable within our budget. Our broker has been negotiating with United Healthcare, and they were able to bring that 24, 24.9% down to 19.9%, so that was a good start. And then, what we looked at is a tiered network plan with United Healthcare to help minimize the impact on employees. And so, the proposal and recommendation we're bringing forward tonight is a tiered network plan that basically takes our current plan and splits it into tier-one network, tier-two network, and then an out-of-network plan as well. We thought this was a good approach as we looked at usage on the plan for this year, as most of our employees are, most of our usage is in the tier network, tier-one network. About 75% of our costs for this year have been in that, that top tier, about 25% in the tier-two network, and then very minimal usage out of network, which is a good sign. The proposal would essentially, like I said, split into different tiers. Tier-one network would actually be a little bit different than what our current plan design has in terms of coverage. The deductible would be the same, but what the plan design changes, it goes from 90% coinsurance to actually 100% coinsurance. And once the deductible is met for employees, they're on, actually, copays for prescription medications and stuff like that. So, it ends up being a little bit better plan for employees who are staying within that tier-one network coverage. Tier-two network, basically, the biggest change there, the deductibles remain the same, out-of-pocket costs remain the same, but coinsurance goes from 90% to 70%. And so, employees or individuals who decide to stay with a doctor who's in tier-one or tier-two would end up paying a little bit more out-of-pocket as a result of a different coverage or, yeah, coverage from United Healthcare. Like I said, deductible would be the same, and out-of-pocket costs would be the same. And so, in theory, they, you know, they meant that out-of-pocket maximum would be the same as tier-one. It's just they would get there quicker as opposed to anyone in tier-one. Out-of-network coverage would be increased for both deductible and out-of-pocket maximums, but like I said, we've seen less than a percent in usage in that plan, so that'd really help guide people to go to tier-one or tier-two. If the Board approved the plan as presented, our next steps would be to communicate to the staff to basically work with them to help communicate, you know, what does that look like? Is their current provider in tier-one? If not, how do they research and find tier-one doctors if they want to make that switch, or just communicating what that looks like if they want to stay in tier-two and what those costs could possibly entail? And we have a lot of resources with our broker to help with that communication out to staff. The proposal for, in Board docs, you'll see there's our current plan proposal, which is at 19.9%, so we're keeping our current plan design. Option two is the plan I just spoke to, which would be a 10% increase on our premiums, and so, we manage that within our budget. We had 8% built into the 23-24 budget. The additional 2% we pick up as a result of our enrollment count we did last month, we picked up some additional revenue as a result of that, so we'd be able, be able to apply that to cover that additional 2% and keep the budget balanced. There is an option, option one, that's another way to approach that tiered network design, but that one does change coinsurance for the current plan, would lead to higher costs across the board for all employees. It's a lower renewal, it's 3% as opposed to 10%, but there would be more costs associated for health coverage for employees, and so that's why we're kind of leaning away from that one as opposed to the option-two plan that we're proposing.
Ben, you mentioned a reason why self-funding wasn't an option this year because of the stopgap. Quotes weren't ready? Is that just the...
We didn't get anyone that were, they basically didn't bid on us because they thought, saw us as too much of a risk, and the reason
Okay.
they would do that is from high-cost claims, and that's really what their, that stop-loss coverage is covering, our high-cost claims. So, if we get a, a claim that's a million dollars, that insurance, that stop-loss coverage would say, all right, you only have to pay X number of dollars on this million-dollar claim, and they cover the rest. At this point, we just have too much exposure and liability as a result of that. We're hoping in future years that we can continue to explore that, and that could be an option in the future, so.
Okay, thank you. When you first explained, I thought, like, we were just, like, still waiting, or we could, we, there was not enough time, so, thank you.
Yeah, these are things that we went over in the Personal Finance Committee. We had a lot more detail on, you know, some of the things that are going on, but I, I think it's probably a good, option two's a good, good place to land. The, the renewal's high, but that's happening right now is the private health insurance market is deteriorating, and the self-funded option, based on our experience, that we kind of had a strange year, so that might be an option for us next year.
Yep.
So, it leaves us some, some legal room, too.
Yeah, based on where we started and where we're kind of landing this, it's, it's probably the best we can hold for, honestly. To be able to keep the deductible at 2,000, 4,000, to be able to keep an HSA contribution for 1,503,000 for employees, really what this does is just make individuals and anyone on the plan, take a few more steps and make sure they're in the, you know, that tier, tier-one network to keep their costs down. And it doesn't restrict anyone from going to that tier-two network. They just have to be aware of the cost, the coinsurance cost might be a little bit higher for them, because as compared to anyone in tier-one network. And there's certain coverages that don't apply to the tiered system, like urgent care, emergency room, that's just kind of all part of the plan, and so mostly it's primary care visits, specialists, and stuff like that. And if someone's going to a tier-one doctor, tier-one doctor, and they made a referral, more than likely, a high chance they're gonna be referring to someone else within the same hospital system, so it's also gonna be a tier-one system, so.
Ben, I have a question. Last year, didn't we have, didn't the employees also have access to, like, a virtual clinic, or?
Yep, so we're able to still maintain that. United Healthcare has virtual options, but in addition to that, we also have a separate vendor called Nice Healthcare, and they provide virtual access as well. They do some in-home service as well, but I mean, their coverage is kind of restricted currently, but we're hoping to extend more north, get into Cedarburg, but that's another option we've also been trying to steer people towards, because they do have some benefits in terms of, virtual coverage can be a little bit more convenient, but they also have some cost savings for prescription medications that can be prescribed through them rather than the health plan, so, yep.
Ben, the, I, I agree, the PNF meeting with this and more detail is very helpful. The individual that spoke, I didn't write his name down.
Scott Fuller, who's our main rep for...
And so, what's here before us, these two new options, are these what kind of came up between him speaking with reps, other reps between the PNF Committee Meeting and today, or what, at what point, I apologize for my speech, I'm having a little bit of trouble today, but I, I think it's just very impressive to me, the amount of time you guys spent on this, and the areas that we're able to stay. And if you could just remind me, percentage-wise, the staff that would potentially be impacted by tier-one to tier-two shifts, I thought there was some discussion about that.
Yep.
Can you just run over that one more time for me?
Yep, and the, and the timeline you described is right on.
That's right, okay, okay.
So, Scott Fuller, who is our main rep for USI, who's our health insurance, our employee benefits broker, he's in constant contact with these providers to negotiate rates, work on plan design, and he has a lot more depth of experience in terms of what those look like. And so, like I said, we were looking at the tier network, because when we pulled data from usage so far this year, we found that something, about 75% of our usage was in that tier-one network, so that would be essentially the same plan we have this year, so minimizing those impacts on employees. And then, about 25% was in the tier-two network, so that'd be additional communication with staff about what that looks like, what it could mean in terms of cost compared to current year, and then, if you want to switch to a tier-one doctor, how do you do that, and what, what tools are available to you. And like, very small portion, like, it's a less than a percent is out-of-network coverage, so.
Do we have rate guarantees, like, for this year? I mean, it came in at 42%, but then it was, you know, capped at, I think, 24%. Will there be a rate guarantee?
That I'd have to double-check on. I assume the one we had for this year would continue, but I don't know if it's a year limit on that, but I'm gonna double-check on that.
One thing that Scott, the insurance expert that you brought into the PNF Committee, said that I just thought was really enlightening, I wanted to bring up here as to why the rate increase was so high this year, aside from some specific events that occurred in the district. He mentioned two things. One was, like, rapidly rising medical inflation, medical expense inflation, and then he also mentioned deferred preventative care from COVID, which I thought was just really sad and unfortunate to hear about, but I thought it was, it made sense as to, you know, he mentioned, like, people with cancer, it would be more progressed or advanced by the time that they got their screenings that were skipped due to COVID.
Yep, and that's a big push that we had with our wellness plan for this year, as one of the main drivers, one of the main steps of that is just having your annual visit with your primary care physician. There's data that supports that in terms of just increased health costs for people who don't annually go to, annually go to their doctor. So, we don't require any information beyond that. We're just saying, have your doctor sign off that you did your annual wellness exam and turn that form. So, definitely trying to push that to make sure that people are getting the habit of doing, having that practice, and it counts as preventative care, so they shouldn't see any costs from that either, so.
I, this, this is probably the item on here that's made me very nervous, to be honest. So, again, I appreciate the, the work that Scott did, the work that you've put into it, the questions that PNF Committee members asked, and the discussion that was had at that particular meeting, I found very helpful, and I'm hopeful that it's a very limited amount of staff members that are dramat, you know, dramatically impacted by the change here.
Yeah, I, I, we'll get feedback on it, and there will be changes for, for some people. I mean, looking at my doctor, I know I'll have to switch doctors if I want to be in tier-one, tier-one network for the new year, so there's gonna be that. Probably the biggest provider who'll go from the, just main plan to tier-two is a sanction, and so we'll have to go through that process to educate people on what that looks like. However, like I said, there's a lot of tools to help people go through that process, and basically, they'll have to make a decision of, you know, staying in tier-two, paying a little bit more for coverage. Like I said, we still are able to maintain that HSA deposit, so that'll help with a lot of costs that people have. And the out-of-pocket costs for total maximum out-of-pocket for tier-one, tier-two remains the same. Like I said, this tier-two would get there quicker, same type of coverage. And people, like, when we were looking at different options for stuff we'd consider tier-one network, you know, we ran some zip codes for the area, and there was, you know, thousands of options in terms of what would be eligible. So, there's not gonna be any shortage of options. It's just making that transition switch is always hard for people.
So, in dollars, the, the current plan with a 20% renewal versus option two that you're recommending with a 10% renewal, what's the price, like, in dollar amounts? What's the difference for that extra 10%?
So, for the district portion of it, a 10% renewal increases annual costs by just under 400,000. And so, it's split over two fiscal years as a result of it being calendar year versus fiscal year. The 19.9% in comparison, that would be close to 780,000, so that's obviously the main reason why we're trying to bring that renewal down, is something more manageable. A 3.1% increase would be 121,000 over the course of the year, so obviously a lot lower, but the drawback of that, obviously, would put a lot more costs on employees as a result of switching to something.
Do we do the math on increasing HSA contributions to offset? Like, is that something that you and Scott looked at, or are we allowed to do that? Another, like?
Yeah, we have full control over HSA deposits for comparison, so we're looking at just premiums. The total annual premium by going up 10% for individual employee would be about $120 for the year for individual plan, and about $280 for a family plan. So, everyone would be impacted by that, because everyone pays the premiums. In terms of plan design, like I said, if people are going to the tier-one network, they could actually pay less than they would for this current plan year, it's just the tier-two network, the out-of-network, that would hurt more costs.
So, you need a, a, we need a motion on one of these options, so the current option one or the option two.
I guess I'm making a comment. I'll, I'll make a motion for this 10% increase. You know, we were looking at 8%, so 10, you know, we're gonna have to manage the budget a bit more. And I guess, you know, there is talk with that budget, we are balanced right now, and that's with a 4% increase to all of our staff, and I guess, you know, doing this 10%, I value the minimal amount And I guess, you know, doing this 10%, I value the minimal amount of health changes for our staff. And so I guess I'll make a motion, you know, that we go with this 10%.
So option-two, as presented?
Yep, yes, option-two, as presented.
I would second that motion, and I just want to add, I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this and all of the research that you've done. There's no, you know, great plan, but I feel like this really minimizes the impact to employees and keeps us pretty close on budget, so I would second that.
Yeah, it's not ideal, but it's the best we can. And you've been working on this, Ben, thank you for, I think from the beginning of the, of the year, of the policy year, right?
Yeah, it's, so we get monthly reports that break down exactly what we need for the renewal. And so we're constantly looking at that. We have monthly meetings with our broker to kind of look at that and work through those details and see how we're trending. And so it's always on our mind, the drawback is the providers, you know, take a while to get the information they need and get proposals out there. But we were working through that, kind of working through different scenarios so we'd be ready at this point to say, all right, if this is the only option, here's what we can propose and bring forward to the board.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, is there further discussion on this?
I will be, again, on this vote abstaining as a member of the negotiations committee. I would rather abstain from the vote.
All right, no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Dave, can you do it one more time? I didn't say it in time.
I'm sorry?
I didn't say aye in time, I was reading. Can you just ask for the vote one more time?
Are you an aye?
I am.
Yeah, okay, so that's good, we're good. And then any opposed? And any abstentions? One abstention, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
The next recommendation is a package deal, although it could be broken up, too, coming from the Policy Committee. The Policy Committee has forwarded the 48 policies updates that you have in your packet. We are seeking a recommendation from the board for the approval of the updates.
And we discussed these in the Policy Committee in great detail. I think it passed a recommendation that, I think, I think we passed a recommendation of approval, was it 3-0? Yes, okay. So I will move approval.
I second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I, yep, I do have a few comments. So there were, there was at least one other policy that's not here. So there was some discussion had at that meeting. That's one I had to leave early, so I was unable to give feedback on three, three of these policies. PO 0144.5, PO 1260, and PO 5505. We have a long meeting tonight, so I'm not going to request, you know, anything in addition, really, but I just wanted to make note that I'll be voting no because I was unable to add input at that committee meeting. And the wording is not quite what I am comfortable with for those three, but I have no problem with the others.
Okay. Did we get a second? We did, right? So motion and a second, any further comment, if anyone? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? All right, motion carries.
All right, the last recommendation this evening is for the acceptance of donations to the district. This month, there are two donations, $6,700 from the USO Family Foundation to support the Parkview Forest Story Stroll, which will consist of 25-story posts and backer sheets. The story posts are used to create a story path where students will read a portion of a story at each post. We also have $2,000 from the Webster PTO to support the Webster Best Buddies Program toward the cost of admission for field trips and activity materials. Best Buddies is a program that facilitates one-to-one friendships for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. If the board approves these, the total board approval donations for October would be $8,700, and for the year, it would be $35,886.80.
Assuming the storyboards will comply with your curriculum requirements and everything, yep, good.
For that Parkview item, I guess first question, when was the donation, the list of donations added to board docs? Because I looked earlier and I didn't see anything, and I'm just, say it one more time, I'm sorry. It was, okay, all right, that's something I'll have to look into then. For that $6,700, was that just directly like a donation to, that was wanted to, oh my goodness. Is Brittany the only one that saw that, or is that through PTO or anything like that? Okay. And do we know is the USO, I don't know anything about this USO Family Foundation, is that, do we have any background on that? Okay. I love the idea, I know there's something similar at West Lawn, and I'm familiar with all of the various individuals that took part in that and what it looks like and how much it's used. Do we know if they're using that as basically a template for what's being done, proposed at Parkview?
Yeah, I think in all three of the elementary schools, they saw what happened at West Lawn, and that's what they're working for, yeah.
Okay.
All right, looking for a motion on the donations.
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
Is your motion to accept?
Yes.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? No, all right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Committee reports, Policy Committee, we just covered that, Curriculum Committee, Elizabeth.
Yeah, we met on October 11th, and we have already passed the four items discussed at that meeting, the Global Scholars Trip to Australia and New Zealand, the World Geography Textbook, the new AP pre-calc course, and the iReady personalized learning ELA lessons. And our next meeting is November 8th.
Fantastic. Building and grounds, Kate Nettsoe.
So we met on October 16th, and a couple of agenda items. There was an update on the Parkview Woods. Dangerous and damaged trees were taken down. They are creating some outdoor classroom spaces and paths, and it sounds like a fabulous undertaking. There was also some discussion about the vintage floor at CHS. There was some issue with the floor pushing against the west wall, and a cut has been made. And hopefully that's going to alleviate the problem. We went over some service contracts that the district holds with Johnson Controls just for information for board members and how that works. There was also some discussion about the Crisis Go app that the district is looking into. This would be an app that would be used in the event that we needed to evacuate the school and would allow teachers to be able to access information about attendance. There was some discussion about the exterior fieldhouse paneling at Cedarburg High School. There were some broken panels, and there was some discussion about how to address whether we replace them all or some of them. And then also, West Lawn roof, it's now completed. There was some water damage along the way, which is being handled by the contractor. And that was it for buildings and grounds.
All right, great, how about personnel and finance?
And that was on October 18th. Many of these items we've already covered, the health insurance renewal, the tax levy, the original budget. There was also some information about transportation and ongoing bus issues as well.
All right, and then we finally have Ms. Kincaid, the WASB 2023 brief summary on that.
Yeah, real quick, there was an event on the 10th. It was for both Region 11 and 15 in Brookfield. And I opted to go to both the workshop as well as the networking and meeting portion of that. The workshop topic was school member responsibilities under public records law. There was about, I believe there was about 25 people in attendance at that one. The, the meeting topic later in the evening was school board accountability practices. And there was an opportunity to connect with individuals at tables and answer questions. Each share how they, as a board, are academically accountable with students and families as well as fiscally accountable to their respective communities. There was also a legislative update, and timeline for the 2024 Delegate Assembly was presented. Announcements about upcoming events were given, including the legislative conference on November 4th. And that's not noticed here, so I will stop there. If the board, if any board members have questions at all, feel free to reach out.
Great, thank you, thank you, everybody. All right, so next on our agenda is adjournment into executive session. And we have to do this a little bit differently than we normally have in the past due to some recent guidance. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take a motion, a second, and then we're going to do a roll call vote. So Brenda, am I to, to read the, what we had done in the past is read the, the purpose for going in before the motion? Are we reading after now? Okay, okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
I will make that motion to adjourn into executive session.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All right, so now I'm going to take a roll call vote. Ms. Sharlin?
Want to say here?
Yes or no?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Ms. Nettsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Dribble?
Yes.
Career's a yes. Kincaid?
Yes.
Right, and Ms. Erickson? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was like, we're skipping over people, but okay.
Sorry about that, yes. All right, we're unanimous, sorry, it's been a long night. All right, so we passed. So we will be moving into executive session. For the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session pursuant to 19.5 sub-1E of the Wisconsin statutes. A deliberation concerning strategy for negotiation of student transportation contract. It is anticipated that the board may reconvene into open session and may take action on one or more of the executive session items, including approval of the minutes of the executive session of September 2023. Thank you.